Lee Sharps.
Here.
Casey Barney.
Here.
Harold Lamos.
Here.
Kathleen DeWolff.
Here.
Rand Newton.
Here.
Okay, do we have any public comments on the agenda? Seeing none, we have minutes from November 5th. Any comments, corrections?
I have some.
Okay.
Page three, one, two.
Uh huh.
It should be, would not be taken at once, not written. Page four, line thirty-one. To appoint Alan, alternate Alan Silly to full member of the B.O.S.
Okay. Yes.
Good catch.
Yep.
What about a no chairman?
No, well, he wasn't chosen chairman.
No, they had no chairman.
That's it.
At the time of the appointment, yeah.
Had and had no chairman.
And, oh, had no chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Just for a little proper.
No, you're absolutely right, okay? Anything else, Kathleen?
Had no chairman.
It's on the same.
Line thirty-one, pending application and had no chairman to appoint.
I have one thing, Kathleen.
Yes.
Are you done, Kathleen?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a comment, same page four, under social media. I'm confused, so I think I need some clarification because I might want to change my vote during that discussion. There's two different ways you could take a no vote, and I'm not sure, I'll ask Harold how he felt, but does no mean, no, we don't approve any use of social media by the town boards, et cetera, at all, or does no mean they can use it without any restrictions whatsoever?
I was going with the latter.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I was going with the latter.
I mean, we were voting on the policy.
The policy.
Yeah, that's right.
Just the policy. And we were either going to approve the policy or not approve the policy. And so a vote would, would not approve the policy and we would have none.
As presented to us.
As presented to us. Social media, you know, out there in the public, we obviously have no control over, but any social media that represents the town, we wanted a policy in place to ensure its proper use, so we were voting on that particular policy and whether or not to implement it.
So not, so not, they can use it for whatever it means, they can use it with this policy in place?
Yes.
Correct.
So what would a no vote mean?
It would mean we don't have a policy.
At all.
At all.
So is it use anything?
They could use anything, but we, we would not recognize it as town-approved. Any, any town committee that wants to use social media, and I used, for example, the Economic Development Committee.
Yes.
And they want a social media policy, but anything they put on it would have to comply to our policy.
Okay.
Or, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't support it. Anything that, that a town committee uses and follows our policy, we can link on our town website.
We'd have no regulation.
Okay, so it doesn't mean they can, a no vote doesn't mean that they can use it no matter what, they have to use it according to the policy that we accepted?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, I just need to clear.
Because if we don't have the policy, then we're stuck where we are right now.
Exactly.
Without anything, no control.
And the reason we brought it up is because it had been pointed out that, that websites that are out there, some of which you have to be invited to join.
Right.
Some of which has been, have been used for posting meetings when people aren't necessarily on that website. We just wanted to ensure that anything that was associated with the town.
Had outlined.
Had, had rules to follow, i.e., you can't use it for disparaging comments and, and that sort of thing.
Okay.
You know?
Okay, it was like, when I went back and read it again, I was a little confused.
Okay. Is it clear now, Lee?
Yes, thank you.
All right, no problem. Is that it for comments?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
From me.
Any more corrections, additions? Okay, a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th as amended.
Let me check.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Department heads, do we have anything under that? It'll be a short meeting tonight. New business, the Whipple House lease. At the last meeting, we proposed a, a new lease to ensure that the wording matched the existing warrant article. We made some changes and approved those changes. We then handed it to the Historical Society for their review and wondered, David, if you had any comments on the lease.
Well, the Historical Society Board did discuss it at a meeting later that week, but we did not come to any real conclusion that would raise any of those concerns. So the vote finally was to say that we could not come to a conclusion at this time, so I wanted to, more time to consider it and to perhaps get legal counsel.
For yourself?
Yes.
Okay. You do understand that the current lease expires at the end of this month? Is that right, Charlie?
No. It expires December 31st.
Oh, December 31st.
We have to warn them or present, present to them with a new lease if they don't sign it by November 30th, that it will expire on December 31st.
Now I'm confused.
No.
If it expires.
This is a, this is a warning to them.
No, it's a, I mean.
It's, yes, it's a warning that we're presenting you with a new lease for your consideration. You must approve it, accept it by November 30th.
Wait a minute.
Wait a minute.
Why does it have to be approved by November 30th if it doesn't expire?
Because that's the language, that's the language.
That's the language in the lease?
Yes, we need to read it over again.
Well, the language in the lease is that you have to send us a notice in writing that you're not renewing the lease.
And, and I'm guessing that might be the business we're doing tonight, since this is our last meeting of the month, and we have to sign all contracts and discuss them in public.
So that was the next question before the board?
Yeah.
If we don't do anything on the lease, it automatically, basically it'll roll over. If not, we take a vote and say we want the new release for them to...
Well, haven't we gotten legal counsel to say that our, that this wording will now match the warrant article? And, and I thought it was the position of this board, that that was our desires, to have a lease that matches the warrant article until or unless such time the vote of the people changes.
So, I, I will put forward, this isn't a new notion. This was first brought up November 15th, 2015, at the First Heritage Meeting, the minutes are online, where we discussed that this was a forty-year-old lease. Remember at this time, according to the warrant article that set up, that established the Heritage Commission, the Heritage Commission now would take the place of the Historic Commission and be kind of the middleman, the liaison between the Historical Society and the B.O.S.
Yeah.
As years went by, that membership dwindled, they didn't fulfill the statutory requirement of who had to be on the board, it dwindled down to two people, no more.
Yeah.
And that link was lost.
Yeah.
So on the first meeting, the first, one of the first meetings that the Heritage Commission had, we discussed it, I could read it if you want me to. Mr. Rule took the minutes, he's the secretary of the Heritage Commission. It was then passed on to the Select Board. We've not, you read, you took the minutes on November 18th, 2015, and the language in that also, it was said, it was discussed being sent to legal, which it was.
Yeah.
Then it fell through the cracks again, because by the time legal got back, it was...
It was past the date.
It was past the date. Now that brings us to 2016, the passing of my husband, the reorganization of the board, the beginning of the budget season, once again, November 30th. So now we're up to 2017. So, once again, the Heritage Commission brought it up. By my count, at least fifteen different times, the Whipple lease was discussed at the Heritage Commission meeting. And this board, it was on the project list for three years. The B.O.S. project list. By my, you know, I said it both fifteen different times, it was discussed. This board, it was an agenda item on August 29th, September 17th, October 1st, and October 15th. So this is something that just was suddenly brought up. This has been an ongoing thing.
Right.
I feel the Historical Society had ample time to at least have some notion of what may come down the road, because at the Heritage Commission meetings, there was discussion that the warrant article did not match the lease.
Yeah.
And it was problematic.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments?
To me, it seems like it's been leapfrogged, because it happens to be at a really bad time of the year, like Kathleen said, with budget season in full effect and all these things that come to fruition at the end of November, you know, we're planning our different meetings, we're planning our warrant articles, you know, getting all that in order. I mean, to play devil's advocate, I think that even if we did vote this lease in, that we should extend, my opinion is, we should extend the current lease until like March, so that this doesn't keep happening every time we need to renew this lease. Every board going here forth is going to have to deal with exactly what we're discussing. I mean, the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and over again, expecting a different result.
I think the state was set up because of the way the lease ran from January to December.
Yeah.
This is a really bad time of year.
Well, it is.
It's always been a bad time of year.
I mean, end of March, begin of May is, there's nothing going on.
This is why we have the project list now.
That's true. It's been on the project list for some time.
You board members that were here before me, you realize how easy it was for things to fall into the cracks, that you would go, oh my goodness, we forgot completely about this. And now the, the way the town administrator has it set up, every month we review it to keep these things fresh.
Yeah.
Charlie reads it out loud at every meeting.
Yeah.
They're available online, they're available on video.
Yeah.
So I feel if the public is interested, they can find this information.
Yeah, so we almost have to take a vote.
Yeah.
To determine whether or not we want to renew the old lease, which I don't think we do, and go with the new one that council wrote.
Yeah.
Now, the second part to this is they had a proposed warrant article, the Whipple House lease warrant article. There's concerns that that will be null and void, because, you know...
If a new lease is signed, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's no, the authority lies with the selectmen under RSA 41:11A, that it says, "The selectmen shall have authority to manage all real property owned by the town and to regulate its use unless such management and regulation is delegated to other public officers by vote of the town." The Ashland Historical Society aren't public officers.
No, it's 501(c)(3), and, and I think therein lies our, our point, our, our issue. As a 501(c)(3), they're entitled to raise funds, to manage those funds, they're entitled to ask the town for funds, like any other charity, but because this is our piece of property, we have jurisdiction over it. And, and I, I agree with you, Charlie, I think we need a vote to approve the legal counsel lease, and then, you know, it behooves them to decide if they want to sign it or not. And if they want to get legal counsel, fine, but...
So there'll be, I guess, a void between whenever they do their business, but we need to do our business.
Right, I mean, we could probably put a memo to go along with it, something on the lines, if not, then I guess the lease will expire.
Yeah.
And then they would have to rewrite the warrant article, or would that...
I think the warrant is a whole separate issue.
I don't think it's, yeah.
It's a whole separate issue.
The warrant, the warrant there for the Historical Society.
The one that we were given.
The one that we were given, yeah, that's lost.
And that's a whole separate discussion. Right now, we have an existing warrant article that the people voted on, and the wording now matches the lease that legal has rewritten.
Okay.
And we need to decide, which seems to me the logical decision, is to ensure that our lease matches what the people voted on.
Because we, we have the stewardship of the town property.
And we have to represent the will of the people.
The will of the people.
People voted on a warrant article, then we have to manage it thus.
And the other thing, where this is a, a lease year by year, this law came into effect in 1994, and then it was updated in 2009, just so these type of leases, and as we all should know, the ninety-nine-year lease at the Legion ties up town assets.
Right.
And we, we need to be flexible and fluid with our assets.
Yeah.
Because we never know what's coming.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And the, the state craft, that I guess is the word, this, this new, this RSA protects towns for being held to these never-ending leases, and it's, it's for everybody's benefit in the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, these are all great points, but I guess I'm going to play devil's advocate here for a second. If we didn't renew their lease, or this didn't come to an agreement, you're stuck in a conundrum, because you have an entity which owns a building which they paid to erect and maintain on a building on land for which they wouldn't lease anymore, which is one of the most historic buildings we have in town.
What do you mean lease?
The Witten House, if they're no longer leasing this and you vacate them.
It's not the Whipple House, not the Witten House.
I understand, but the Witten House is on the same piece of land, right?
It doesn't matter, we're not talking about the Witten House, that's a completely separate entity.
That is a totally separate.
If there's no paperwork saying that they pay any, any shape or form for the occupancy of that piece of land, which is...
No, they pay for the lease of the ground tower.
Yeah.
And that building sits on the ground.
Right, but if there's no lease, then how is that, that's going to come in?
And there's people, there's people working on a timeline of all that documentation right now, we see the email shortly before it came, so that's a totally separate issue that the Historical Society will have to deal with also.
Well, it's not like they're going to up and move the Witten House if you guys kick them out.
But, but the issue here, the issue here is specifically the Whipple House. And the specific issue with the Whipple House is the use of the rental income. And that was the thing in the lease that we changed, and that was the only thing we changed, was the, the use of the rental income.
We have multiple issues, but we're taking this one first.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we can have a resolution that the Historical Society can come together and decide how are they going to move forward in the future. And we're, we're going to have to sit down and talk about this.
We are, and I mean, I think we all very much support the Historical Society, absolutely, you know, want to see them succeed.
But we are curtailing any activities, they're closed for the winter, the house is not open during the winter, so we have to make sure they're aware they need to do something on their side, and we have to keep it on our project list. But right now, I think we need to deal with this issue now.
I would agree.
And have, and have it off the project list. And meet statutory regulations.
So is there any kind of a motion to approve the rewritten lease?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay, what, what more discussion do we need?
Okay, I guess, what the people...
We approved the lease the last time.
I understand, but the people in TB Land may want to know the consequences if this lease is not renewed, and then it's not renewed by November 30th, then where does that put the Historical Society? Where does that put...
They, they all have to decide how to do that.
But legally, if they don't have another meeting before the 30th, and this expires, legally, that, what's that mean, they have to vacate?
We haven't, I don't think Charlie's explored that, we're doing one step at a time.
The lease expires December 30th.
Yeah, no, they don't have a vacation.
December 30th, they have a month.
Well, I think we've got time, even though it, we should decide by the end of November, I think we could have a little wiggle room and get it signed by the end of December.
Yeah, I had those same concerns, and I was just waiting for a vote from the board to see how we move forward with that. But I would add that, you know, it sounds like you want me to write the memo too, as a second motion to write a memo that says, you know, this old lease is going to expire if not. Because otherwise, if you don't, we don't do that, then it just, it's going to roll over.
Yeah, and they'll, you know, then they'll have a month and a half to consult their own legal attorney, and, and we'd have a subsequent discussion, but right now, the best information we have is that our lawyer has said, this is the language that now complies with the vote of the people, and as such, I think, you know, we need to stick to that. Any other discussion? Casey?
So we're, so they have to have something in by the end of this month?
Preferably, but I think we have some wiggle room into December.
So what do you mean by that?
Well, the lease expires at the end of December. Somehow, I think we can get this resolved by the end of December.
I'm hoping that's true too, but we need, we need to follow the legal directive that the Mitchell Group set up. So there'll be, I think, are we still on Harold's motion, or?
It, it's still, he seconded your motion. This is still discussion about the motion.
I would, I would say we make a motion to notify in writing.
Well, we got to finish this.
That's what it is, so.
No, we got to finish the approval of the lease first.
And then amend it.
Okay, then we'll make any second motion.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, no, 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 we're still working on discussion about this.
So you're saying that we want to push this lease forward, right?
Yes.
But we are giving them the longer than the 30th?
Well, their current lease expires at the end of December.
December.
I know that, yeah.
So technically, we have until the end of December. Now, the wording says that they should notify us by the end of November, but they're going to be seeking their own attorney. I'm comfortable that we can work this out in the next month and a half.
Okay, I'm just...
No, 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 no.
No?
No, that's not what it says.
That's the thing.
Less than that?
The current lease says, "Of each year thereafter, unless either party shall on or before November 30 of any year, notify the party in writing that the lease shall not be renewed for the immediate, immediately following in all subsequent calendar years."
Okay.
So unless we get together.
Well, so we can...
In two weeks.
All right.
Well, that's...
Then it's going to renew after the 30th.
No, 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 we, we can't let that happen.
That was my question.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You're going to write the memo.
But if we notify them by the end of November that the old lease is not going to be renewed, that this is the one, then they have that month to figure out what they want to do. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We need to decide.
That's right, we need, we need, we need to do what we need.
But we need to decide by November 30th, but they don't.
So are we making that decision right now on this motion, or?
This is our last meeting.
Well, that's my question, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but the...
I'm just more or less asking, because if we don't, then it gives them less time to come up with a motion.
Exactly, exactly. So the motion on the table is to, first, to approve this lease.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any, is there any harm? I know that we've, this has been on the radar for what, five or six years, if not longer? I'm just looking at all the, the things, there's a lot of gray matter here, and that's malleable, so when I look at the fact that you have someone coming forward that wants to have a petition warrant article, and then you have us that wants a new lease, and they want to keep the old lease, as far as going through the motions of getting this new lease approved, and then have their legal come back, and then a possible warrant article, why don't we just approve this lease, but have it come into effect after voting day? What would that hurt?
Because the current lease is not valid, it does not match the will of the people. That's the reason why we're doing it.
And Charlie just, and I...
And that's why we're doing it, is because the people voted on a certain, on certain parameters.
I understand, but...
And we, as a board, need to comply with the will of the people.
And because of RSA 41.
I'm just saying that the people know about the legal line, and if we're up here just piling up the legal expenses, and we're already over it by 300%, that it doesn't do much good to the people.
But, but this is already done.
Done.
1976, yeah.
This is already done. We've already gotten the legal opinion.
And as Charlie brought up, and I sent it to all my fellow board members about the RSA, we as the board, we are the ones who decide, who control all town property. Or unless it's delegated to a public body, such as the Conservation Commission, the Heritage Commission, the Library Trustees, for a town forest, for public recreation, all governmental.
Right.
People who are appointed or elected. The Historical Society does not meet those conditions.
Right.
So if they put forward the warrant article that they gave us at the last meeting, I would, yes, that league would say, yes, you can put it forward, because, you know, we have to include all petition warrant articles, but it won't be enforceable, because the legislative body, which are the voters, cannot tell the selectmen how to manage the property. They can give them permission.
Right.
They can lease it.
Yeah.
But not who they can lease it to, and how it can be controlled, and what to do with those monies. So the, the warrant article that the Historical Society gave to us is flawed. It, it's not unenforceable, because it's superseded by this RSA.
Right, and, and again, that's a separate matter. I think right now, we need to take step one.
That's right, so Harold's, Harold's looking far ahead.
He's assuming that the warrant article will take place and we'll go back to the old ways, and I'm not convinced that that's going to be the, the outcome of all this.
So we need to take care of the business at hand.
But we can't, we can't look at the future. We need to take care of the business at hand, and the business at hand, according to legal, is that this wording now complies with the will of the people. And is painful or uncomfortable and annoying, as all that may be, I think we have our legal responsibility.
People make mistakes, we aren't professionals.
No, we're not.
And yes, they had many years where this was not an issue, but, but we all know it's become an issue in the last few years, and...
And just because something's always been done a certain way doesn't mean it's always been done right.
Correct.
And, you know, it's not fun to do things right sometimes.
But since I'm the, the, the ex officio to the Heritage Commission, this is part of my duties too. I can't just pretend that this doesn't exist, that, yeah, it's, it's the way it's always been done. I have statutory duties to that, to do that.
Yeah. Any, any other comments? Lee, Casey?
No, I just, it's murky, but if it's going to happen, we just got to do it tonight, so they get some more time.
Okay. All right, in that case, I'll call for a vote. All those who approve of the, the new lease as revised by legal, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next issue. Do we want to write a memo to the Historical Society notifying them of our decision, that this is the lease that we're presenting and the other lease is going to...
That's what's stated in the lease.
Yeah, the other lease will no longer be valid.
There's no reason not to, if we already just approved it right.
That's right. Okay, I, I don't think we need a vote on that, I think that's fatal, that, that has to happen.
I would like to make a motion for some of that.
All right, go ahead.
I have a motion that we duly notify in writing before November 30 of 2019, the lease between the town of Ashland, the landlord, and the Ashland Historical Society, the tenant, commence in January 1 to 2019, December 31, 2019, shall not be renewed.
Okay, is there a second?
And I'm just taking that out of the lease language.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
and they lent out 32 items to other New Hampshire libraries. We added 44 books for adults, 36 books for children, and seven DVDs in October. Couple events going on this coming month. Their library is offering Ninnin every Thursday evening this fall from 6:00 to 7:00. So everyone knows, the library will be closed on Thursday, this coming Thursday for Thanksgiving, and Friday, November 23rd, as will the town office, and all staff have it off, except for PD. Book group will be held on Monday, November 26th, at 7:00 o'clock in the evening. Teen night will be held on Friday, November 30th, from 6:00 to 8:30. Preschool time will take place on Friday, December 7th, at 10:30. Pictures with Santa, sponsored by Friends of the Library, will take place during Christmas night in Ashland on Friday, December 7th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And one of our favorite times of the month is when we get our com, our quote from Director Weinberg. Outside of a dog, a book is, is a man's best friend. Inside of a dog, it's too dark to read.
Oh, gross.
Brachomarks.
It figures. That's wonderful.
That's good.
I do like those comments.
That's good.
Okay, Parks and Rec, still using the food bank for healthy snacks for the after-school program. The program's averaging 26 kids per day, and 40 kids signed up for the program. The kids had fun, a kids' night out in October for Halloween, they had 28 kids, they had a lot of activities. The trees at the camp have been cut down, I don't know if anyone's seen that.
Yes.
Yeah, they took down some big trees. Couple of them, I'm glad they took down, I drove through, and there's a few that were just rotting inside.
Yeah.
East Mechanicals coming this month to put heat into the booster club. Remember that, we approved that.
Yep.
A couple of weeks ago. The town clerk tax collector collected $44,890. Vehicle registrations was $31,936. Dog registrations were $22, and vital records were $185. The new tax billing, billing system was installed this month. I have another update that's not listed here. Oh, gosh, the past couple of days, we've been receiving a lot of phone calls about tax bills. And so everyone knows, tax bills are going out late this year. So it didn't get lost in the mail, no one's gonna get hit with a penalty or anything like that. What happened was, since we're in our revow, we are transferring the data from new software to, from old software to new software. And it's taken some time. Now, with that being said, the assessors told me today that letters are going out today with the new values, okay? And CNP plans on taking calls Wednesday, next Monday, and Tuesday. And Thursday, Friday, and Saturday are gonna be hearings for, in the town office. Yeah.
Okay.
And then after that, we're hoping December 3rd, the data will be uploaded, and then we can produce the MS-1. The MS-1 goes to DRA, and then we can send the tax rate and get the tax bills out.
Okay.
So hopefully, the week of December 10th is when, you know, we're gonna generate the bills and get them out and due probably somewhere.
Okay.
So late with the tax rate.
Late, very late.
Very late.
What, did, what pulled them up? Was it the logistics of not enough manpower or? Because I didn't have anybody come to my house this year asking to look inside or anything.
A little bit, a little bit. It, it sounded like the manpower was a problem for them, because they were short-staffed, converted all that data. So 1,700 parcels, estimate, converted from one software, putting all that information in, turn it over. And then, we even got hung up today that our IT guys are changing their server. So that kinda slowed things down too.
Yeah, I only ask because usually they come around and knock on the door and say, can they come in or whatnot? And I didn't see anybody this year, so I knew they must be behind for some reason.
Yeah. So hopefully, that brings everyone up to, to speed, because I know there's been a concern. We've been getting a lot of calls about people wondering, you know, where's our taxes?
Right.
Stuff to pay. Okay, and as a reminder, the Ashland 150th Celebration License Plates are to be removed by December 31st.
Could I add to that too?
Sure.
Just a, a reminder too, to the 150th, and I think, is it the electric company that puts the banners up? That the banners are supposed to come down, and just request that the original banners are supposed to go back into the spots where they were originally, before they were replaced. So I just wanna remind them.
Yep. Do we have Christmas banners that are supposed to go up? For the season?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Those are in addition.
Yep.
Yeah, it looks odd around town with the snow on the ground, you know, Christmas banners.
Yeah.
Not even Thanksgiving yet.
I know.
Yeah.
I still have a case of Halloween candy in my mouth, I got our first snowstorm, so.
So the building inspector issued five permits, two inspections, responded to 52 emails, and collected $804 in fees. Yeah, Public Works Director Moore, a lot going on with DPW, this is pretty much over the past couple of months. They started their fall cleanup. A lot of this, I'll read off, because it's, I think it's good informational stuff for the public.
He did a very good job.
Yeah, he, he, he's got quite a bit in here that I think will help explain the roads, and how they deal with water issues, and trying to maintain the roads. They started out ditching, grating, and sealing the dirt roads. During the process, sealing the dirt roads, liquid calcium chloride is sprayed on the road, then compacted with a roller, which makes a smooth surface. The process makes the road surface hard and nearly dust-free. I think this, he did this on the road that goes to the transfer station. I don't know if anyone's noticed going down there last year.
It looks much better.
Yeah.
It's much better.
This is what he's talking about.
Yeah, no, it's fabulous.
From there, they started to repair the pavement and manning areas in town, especially around sewer manhole covers. Smith Hill, they discontinued the culvert, discharging onto private property. It redirected the water flow to the drain at the bottom of the road.
Very nice.
Yeah. I think that has been, that, that was a long, ongoing issue there.
It was, we just have to remember that water runs downhill.
Yeah.
Worry about the people down below that culvert now.
Right.
Have you noticed that anyone?
No, I spoke to the.
On the board noticed the difference over there?
Yes, and I spoke to the homeowners, and they are.
They're happy.
So pleased, so pleased, and they said it is not going across the road. The manholes are working as planned.
Okay, good.
Right.
Yeah, I had a lot of good comments, only, only bad comment I had was by the homeowner downhill, wondering if we were gonna do a catch basin or what.
I haven't heard anything, and I'm sure they would let me know if there is issues.
Yeah, this was just yesterday.
Yeah. They then moved to Wadley, Wadley Road, where extensive roadside work was needed. Both sides of the road were reworked to improve water flow away from the road edge. They addressed the erosion on the roadside of North Ashland Road near the state DOT shed. DOT, DPW capped a culvert that was causing the edge of the road to wash away down a steep grade to the Pemmy. That's been an issue for many years, just kept getting worse for DPW. Eventually, the road would have, would have washed out and caused a major reconstruction project. Water diverted, we, DPW diverted the flow of water down the side of the road into a large culvert that it discharges into a more manageable area. The edge of the road was repaired and seeded, everything seems to be flowing well, and the original washout seems stable. I don't know if anyone on North Ashland Road has seen this.
It was.
Thumbs up.
The water was going through the culvert and around it. And the slope is about like this, and it already took down two trees down towards the river, and they took the so-called pebbles away, and they have now barriers. And a couple of weeks ago, there was a, like, four or five turkeys who found this area quite delightful. There's a lot of, I don't know what they.
It's a lot of seed.
But he seeded it and came, I don't know, I can't grow anything in my yard, but somehow they got that to seed, they seeded it, and it grew very quickly.
That's wonderful.
Nice.
Yeah, it's, hopefully it will hold up.
Yeah.
Well, that's that stretch of road where a couple of years ago, was it four or five years ago, we had the, the guard, or I should say, the posts put in there because it had washed out before? I don't know, that might have been before your time.
They didn't put posts there, they just put.
The little square?
No, no, they just put boulders.
Oh.
That one of the complainants called pebbles.
Okay.
It would not have stopped anybody going down that hill.
All right.
So on to Collins Street, where we had, they did a lot of prep work, readying that for paving. DPW started out by adding a retaining wall to help control the erosion and widen the road near the bridge area. I did see this, you, you see it right?
It's wonderful.
As you go over the bridge, it's on the right-hand side.
It's wonderful. Yeah.
It is.
So they, they widened the road near the bridge area as planned, actually moved the road to improve the entrance and exit of the one-lane bridge. They did a lot of excavation on the roadside to allow for the road to be moved. The paving, GMI completed the paving. I believe this, this is the paving that went all the way down to water and sewer.
Yep.
In late August, DPW was notified that the rules of glass collection has changed, and they needed to move a huge pile of glass that was stored at the transfer station for years. So on September 28th, the crew spent nearly a week hauling glass to a processing plant. Yeah, the only glass that can now be recycled is condiment jars, beer, wine, and soda bottles. No window glass household or automotive drinking glass or porcelain can be recycled. These items need to be placed in the construction debris pile.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunate.
Yep.
DPW started their fall cleanup, of course, they've already started to plow.
They've been used to it.
Yeah. On Monday, October 29th, DPW attended plow and safety and collision avoidance training con, that was done by PrimeX. They also attended green snow pro-training required by the state of New Hampshire. This teaches the crew how to spread salt effectively, reducing waste. The plows and sanders have been inspected, and they, they'll probably be out there tomorrow with the snow coming.
They've been out there, that beep, beep, beep at 5:00 in the morning a few days ago.
So I think we're supposed to get another 11 inches.
Yeah, they do, right outside my bedroom, it's great.
That's awesome.
All right, the PD had 342 calls, 92 incidents, 11 arrests, four warrants, three accidents, 59 citations, and three parking tickets. They continue to follow up on investigations. The lieutenant passed his recertification as firearms instructor, excuse me, instructor, through police standards and training personnel. Oh, excuse me, personnel. The PD also passed their yearly firearms training. Chief, the lieutenant, officers Cody, Water Bear, and Laren attended recertification as toxilizer operators. Basically, that's the breath machine for DPW.
DWI, not DPW.
This is testing to see if you're paying attention.
Sidecrack.
GWI, yeah, not, yeah, our drivers don't drive wrong.
I hope not.
Chief Brando is on the Joint Loss Committee. They inspected the water safety treatment facility for safety. Also participated in the National Drug Takeback Program. The PD took in 10.9 pounds of unused medication. Get this, the state as a whole has taken in 11,880 pounds.
Wow.
That's cool, that's cool. What happens if they don't take that in?
If they don't take it?
Yeah.
People use it flush it down their toilet.
Flush it down the toilet.
That's the problem. Well, in cities, that was a problem.
It's all through the DEA, so it's, they're gonna keep doing it.
That's good.
Incinerator.
And how many times a year do they do it?
Twice a year, we usually do it in the spring and fall.
Okay.
Right.
All right, cool. Ashland PD, with the assistance with Fire Chief Heath and the Highway Supervisor Dan Titus, they provided safety control for the Ashland Elementary School Halloween Parade. Took a treat for this year, went smoothly, there were no issues.
Yay.
Chief wants to remind that there, everyone, that there's no parking on any street in Ashland from November 1st through May 1st. And as a reminder.
The hours?
Overnight.
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 We can park there during the day.
The hours?
It's just overnight.
Just overnight?
Yes, overnight.
Yeah, 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m.
Right.
It's the same program it's been for 100 years.
I know. We just wanted to make sure it was clear that we can still park there during the day.
You can still park on the road.
Yeah.
I don't know if I put that in there, but the Mechanic Street parking lot is also off limits now.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
And the Memorial Lot parking lot will be off limits tonight, December 1st, I think it is.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
And always lock your cars, or break-ins do happen for vehicles. Fire Department, 43 calls were taken, they responded to 25 medical emergencies. Fire rescue calls were nine. Motor vehicle accidents were seven and two service calls. The department continues their training, advancing hose lines. EMS training involved discussion and review of protocols regarding obstetrical.
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 That's a tough one. Two of their personnel are currently enrolled in classes that will lead to certification as nationally-registered EMTs. The department had live fire training in Holderness. They conducted, personnel conducted activities at Ashland Elementary School during Fire Prevention Week. Home fire safety presentations were conducted in the classrooms, and in the fire safety trailer, which was borrowed from Tilton and Northfield Fire Department, firefighting musters were also conducted for the intermediate, immediate, middle tiers. The new fire trucks in service, personnel continues to train with the new engine. The apparatus evaluation was completed on engines 1 and 2 and ladder 1. New front brakes were installed on ladder 1 by the town mechanic. Aerial and ground ladder testing were completed on October 23rd, there's no issues. Annual maintenance on the Hearst Rescue Tool is completed on November 20th, which will complete all of their annual testing and maintenance in '29. Chief is continuing to do life safety code inspections, and Chief, Deputy Chief Busque is continuing to file his NFIRS reports.
Excellent.
Very nice.
One question on the Fire Department. I didn't see it in here, is the ladder truck back in operation?
Yep, oh, that was the break, I said.
Well, I, I know the brakes had been done, and then there was an issue there for it. That's why I'm asking it to back to service.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, project list.
Project list, the Tap Grant Project, this is the reconstruction of the sidewalk along Main Street and US Routes 3 and 25. Been trying to have a meeting with DOT and KB Partners. Last Friday, we had the snow, there was an emergency that happened with DOT, they weren't able to attend today. So it looks like we're supposed to meet on Wednesday. This is basically to get together with District DOT to go over the preliminary designs that State DOT was expecting, lots to do with the pipe and the drainage and stuff like that. So I invited Craig to attend, hopefully we can have that meeting on Wednesday.
Will they provide another update to the board at some point?
Yeah, we're supposed to.
Okay. I, I know that economic development would like to come to that presentation. They're very interested in it, so, okay.
Yeah. No updates on Thompson Street, that's basically.
Warrant article?
Warrant article, we'll have a public hearing before, et cetera, et cetera. Ashland Properties, the LW Packard Mill Site. We're still waiting for the approval from CDBG, or CDFA for the grant. I answered a couple of follow-up questions today about the application with that, so nothing major, just waiting here, we can approve. The L-Chip, Williams Architect was in the office with a structural engineer going through the building. No major updates except for that, expect to have the report hopefully by December, because we need to get the reimbursement from the L-Chip folks for the grant. CAI Technology started early on the GIS mapping project, so they, they're already getting going on that. As I mentioned before, our land use files are out of the office for a little while. They took three boxes out, they're gonna go through them and start cramming through the data. That project is basically off and running. The Whipple House, we talked about earlier, the building permit fees. We provided the board with the new suggested fees, I don't know if we're ready to schedule a public hearing.
I think we need to discuss a work session first. We can't have a public hearing until we're in agreement about what we're gonna present, so.
Yeah.
Should we do that with the planning board?
It would be okay with me, we can certainly inquire.
If they're important?
Yeah, I, I would certainly welcome their input. So maybe you can set up a, a special meeting, Charlie, I really think we need to stop kicking this can down the road.
One of my favorite games, kick the can.
Yeah.
Whoever remembers that.
We're old, some of us are old enough to remember that.
The grant opportunities, no updates here, but I do have, I guess, one I can kind of throw in there. The, the CDPG grant for Harvey Properties was approved. I put out today for the RFP to hire a grant administrator, not at our cost. It's all through the grant, but we are basically the intermediary with that.
Right.
So it all comes through us, but that, that went out today, to be advertised in the union later.
Great.
On November 21st.
What was the amount of that grant?
I think $500,000.
Okay.
Wow.
That's great.
But it's way more than that, I mean, that's matching, I think.
Yeah.
I think they're over a million dollars.
Oh, I wouldn't be surprised, there's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Well, I mean, the last time it was over, that was the year I was born, that was 43 years ago.
Yeah.
Folks, time.
Yeah. All right. Other than that, no updates, personnel policy, solar energy. Yeah, I did, I sent you an email, I think, because NHMA, someone at the NHMA conference after reached out to me about a proposal for a solar project. It seems like we'd have to do some type of financing to anything I go on. I don't know if now's the time for us.
I know.
To be really asking for finance this late in the year.
Right.
When we have the Thompson Street project, we have the sidewalk project.
And it's really hard to get them here, anybody here for a presentation for some reason.
Yeah.
Can I schedule something?
Yeah, I did, I sent you an email, I think, 'cause NHMA, someone at the NHMA conference after reached out to me about, um, proposal for a solar project. It seems like we'd have to do some type of financing to anything I go on, I don't know if now's the time for us-
I know.
-to be really asking for finance this late in the year-
Right, right.
-when we have the Thompson Street project, we have the sidewalk project.
And it's really hard to get them here, anybody here for a presentation for some reason. I, I think maybe after January, we might have an easier time of doing that, 'cause they've been, everybody's been. So I'll start again.
Okay, any other old business? Uh, select board items, we have a planning board member appointment to the ZBA, um, as it's November seventh, at its November seventh, twenty eighteen meeting, draftman's attached, the planning board approved Martine Badger as its representative to and member on the Ashland Zoning Board of Adjustment. The planning board is requesting that the Board of Selectmen officially appoint Martine Badger as a voting member of the ZBA. Historically, in Ashland, one member of the planning board has been appointed as a regular voting member of the ZBA. The appointment of one planning board member to the zoning board will enable the zoning board to field a quorum of three members, we still need two more, would be nice, and enable it to conduct official business this month. Uh, New Hampshire RSA six seventy-three colon seven dash one enables and allows the appointment of a planning board member to another land use board, for example, the zoning board. In the case of towns, any two appointed or elected members of the planning board may also serve together on any other municipal board or commission, except that no more than one member of the planning board shall serve on the Conservation Commission, the local governing body or a local land, uh, use board as defined by RSA six seventy-two colon seven. So, with that, I would accept a nomination to appoint Martine Badger as the Planning Board Representative, uh, voting member on the ZBA.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I will excitedly make that second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? I opposed.
I have the, um-
You have the thing to, okay.
The appointment of Martine, want to come up there?
You wanna get sworn in, Martine?
Come get sworn in.
Okay, um, repeat after me. I'm Martine Badger.
I'm Martine Badger.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge-
That I will faithfully and-
Impartially.
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties-
And perform all the duties.
Incumbent on me-
Incumbent on me.
As a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
As a member of the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
According to the best of my abilities-
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations-
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution and laws-
Of the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
State of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Thank you, Martine.
Thank you, Martine. We will sign this.
I have one other, uh, new item, if I could.
Sure.
I know we've, we've discussed this in the past, and I think maybe this would be the place to put it, but, um, we've discussed about, uh, returning our work sessions to having them actually be work sessions instead of, uh, of voting, uh, of course, obviously we'd be able to vote if something important comes up, but-
Emergency, yeah.
A, a work session where we actually sit down, discuss what we're going to be doing for our next meeting, so we'll all be informed as to what, um, we're gonna be discussing, and that's basically laid out in the right to know, that's a suggested procedure for our work sessions or to be work sessions.
I'm really glad you brought that up, because, um, I, I totally agree with you, we end up having two regular formal meetings, and we don't really have an opportunity to sit and face to face each other and discuss and hash out some of these things like fees, for example.
Yes, right.
We end up having discussions-
And policies and-
Yeah, we end up having discussions that we could have had prior to a meeting.
Right.
And, like you said, we wouldn't be doing regular voting unless an emergency came up.
Right.
They'd still be public. Um, the question is, do you still wanna film them? And where do you wanna have them? I think they still should be on the, the third Tuesday, I mean, Monday, um, at a place that's convenient for the public to get to, but the arrangement will be different, we won't be taking public comments, um, we'll just be sitting face to face and discussing issues. Thoughts?
Well, I've discussed this with Charlie, and I've discussed it with Lee and you, um, I think you can remember, once upon a time, you did have these kinds of meetings, they were less formal, you were, people were more relaxed.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't have to do what I'm doing now, because I like to make eye contact with some people.
Yeah, right, right, right.
And we could do, uh, research at our leisure instead of-
That's right, we can share information, um, that we, I come here, I really don't know what anybody else feels and thinks about anything, and I feel that could, that's, that hinders me in my decision-making. I would say, this meeting would probably don't need to have filmed.
Yeah.
We need to have the people that are interested come and participate-
Right.
By, you know, being at the meeting.
Yeah.
There was something else I was, I was thinking about, um, that, oh, the, this whole ninety-one A thing, I think it's really put a pall over to how we do business. We're, we're almost hesitant to even speak to each other, and, especially out in public in any way, shape or form, I don't like it when people say, "Oh, are you having a meeting?" Like, like I have nothing else in my life to talk about to anybody but, it's governmental stuff. Um, and I, I would like to have a more relaxed atmosphere.
I, I would too.
And then we can bring information that we find from the outside, like, say, solar, I have information that we could distribute and talk about instead of me doing it in a formal, and then we'd all know when it happens what we're talking about.
So when we come to a meeting, we can make a motion almost immediately, have a brief discussion, because we are, we're all, maybe not on the same page, but we're informed, we know what we're talking about.
And, and we can pass along anything, any relevant information to the public at a formal meeting, but prior to a vote too. You know, I don't want the discussion to be all in secret, it shouldn't be, I mean, we still want transparency, and again, it's still a public meeting.
Is there any thoughts of having it earlier? I don't know what Casey's work, uh, was on.
By earlier, what do you mean?
Six. Is that a problem? If it's a problem, Casey-
Oh, I get out at five, and it's an hour to get here.
Okay, well-
From Manchester?
Yeah.
Because I'm thinking about if we want to have anybody from, and staff join us.
About an hour, I mean, give or take traffic, right?
Yeah.
Especially certain days.
Yeah, no, that's, that's cutting it too close, I think.
I didn't know where you were working from, but we'll, we'll stick, we'll stick to our regular six thirty.
We'll, we'll stick to six thirty, you know, I don't wanna put on due pressure.
Oh, no, I don't want to be morning.
Because it's important that you're there, we want you there.
Yeah, we don't want you to rush.
Right.
Probably don't want you to be in too much.
No, so, okay, um, we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
So it is-
Well, to, uh, make a motion to keep it at the same night and the same time, except to call it a work session.
And we will not be, have a PBCM film us?
I don't know about that part, I-
Yeah, let, let, let's just-
Let's just do this part.
Let's just do this part.
So what is this part?
Our second meeting-
Sounds like we're not changing anything.
We are, we're changing everything.
The format.
Instead of having this type of meeting, um, we will be sitting face to face, and we won't be having this formal agenda, we won't be having public comments, you know, we won't be doing voting on motions, we'll be discussing issues.
But we will have an agenda so that we can get-
In preparation for the formal meeting where we present to the public.
So the difference is that we just sit facing one another?
And it's a more casual discussion, it's not a structured-
We're not familiar with these.
We do have an agenda though, so that we'll discuss-
Yeah, we'll have an agenda, we'll know the topics that we're gonna discuss, but-
Like beliefs or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't-
But it'll be far less formal.
Yeah, it just doesn't sound very different.
Yeah, it'll be different.
Well, it is, yeah, it, yeah.
It's just, it's our meeting, right? We can conduct it however we want.
Exactly.
Right, right.
It's not really-
But, you know, we've, we've evolved to having two regular formal meetings, and we don't really have that time.
Now that we have to discuss warrants coming up, this will be a way for us to, to, um, throw ideas back and forth, how we feel, how we could approach this warrant.
And then not spend as much time at the regular meeting if we already know.
Exactly.
It's kind of spelled out, if you look in, um, Exploring the Territory and, uh, Open Meetings, here's a book, um, on the desk two that explains a little bit more-
Yeah.
-about work sessions.
Right.
Now, if you ever watch the Plymouth meetings, they come in, they sit down to get right to the agenda, boom, they're done. Because they have their work session before.
And holderness does the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so really the only difference is we're notifying people of how we're going to be conducting the meetings?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Because it's still with the compliance with ninety-one A.
Right.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I'm just not convinced it requires a motion if we're just gonna do something differently.
We didn't tell you it would be two or three hours longer, though.
I'll, can we, oh.
No, I'm kidding.
Well, it could be longer, but these meetings will be shorter.
Yes.
And that, that's the whole goal of it.
I think my only, my only concern with it would be, if we did get to the, to going around the whole videotaping or not, is that I think, um, if we were discussing anything budgetary, whereas we've asked that the budget committee meetings be videotaped, that perhaps there'd be some pushback there.
I think you might be right.
Yeah.
I might be a little bit right.
I think you're right.
Okay.
So you don't want the cameras on the work sessions?
No, we'll, we'll do it for the time being.
I think we do.
We'll, we'll do it for the time being.
Right, that's what you mean here, right?
Well, except that the, you know, again, there's no voting.
Right, unless, unless it's something that, that doesn't mean there's definitely not gonna be a voting.
No. For the time being, we'll keep the cameras there.
My argument would be, I think people are fairly cognizant of how we conduct our meetings. I think the budget committee was something people didn't understand, well, there's a lot more people, and there's a lot more discussion because of that, and how they come to their decisions. Maybe after this year? It's discontinued, but I had heard a lot of people say, "What the heck do they do?"
Right, no, and, and given the fact that the budget is one of the single most important things in this town that they're responsible for.
And they are elected officials, so, um, we could take turns, who gets, who gets to be the star of the year, who gets to get filmed.
You know, we did our budget discussions without a camera, because we had them in the morning, so, um-
And yes, and you used to have those early morning or the afternoon.
But again, any votes are gonna be in front of the camera anyway, and, and there'll be a discussion of sorts, just not the in-depth, you know, give and take kind of thing.
I just didn't wanna waste our bandwidth at these regular meetings, being accused of stonewalling anybody in our meetings with no video cameras.
And I think that's, I, I don't like that assumption that we're stonewalling people or doing something alone.
I'm not assuming anything, but I know that in this kind of, I'm doing inclusion, and if you don't videotape everything, somebody's gonna shoot you up somewhere.
Well, you know, and I think that's why, because there's plenty towns that do not videotape any of their meetings.
Yeah.
So I'll move the TA, Town Administration Updates and Project List, I could probably move that, I do that at the work session, do you wanna move it to the regular meeting?
Well, the public needs to hear those.
Yeah, that's information.
And for a work session-
So leave it on the work session?
For the work session, only relate to us what's, what's changed or what's important.
While we're filming, let it leave it.
But, 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 you know, for the regular meeting, I think it's important that the public get these TA updates.
I agree with Brian.
They need to know, know what's going on.
What do you want me to do?
Keep it, keep it the way it is now for the public meeting. At the work session, we don't need to go through the whole thing, only things that are current and changing.
That's what he wants to know, does he wanna do it at the regular meetings?
Do it at the regular meeting.
It should be the formal, like you just basically read tonight.
Yeah.
And, and less formal at a work session where you just say, "Oh, by the way, this is what's going on with the Tap Grant."
Hey guys, this is what happened.
I've never been to one.
You don't need to read-
It's like a click no person. We should ask if he has time to do that like that, though.
Hmm?
We should ask him if he has time to do that, to move it like that.
Why wouldn't he? If you do it for the regular meeting, just continue to do it for the one regular meeting.
Well, no, I usually do it on the work session.
Yeah, well, no, put it on the, the formal, the regular. Oh, is that what she, I'm sorry, who's on first? Okay, yeah, put it on, on the regular meeting.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we'll discuss only what we need to for the work session, only as it applies to the current session.
We don't really probably have to have one next month, I mean, maybe we thought about, uh, just having like a year-end review or something, because everyone is getting ready for the town report, as it is.
Yeah.
So it'd probably be a lot of overlap there.
Yeah, it's true.
Do you have enough time to move it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
But I, we'll have two weeks.
If it doesn't work out, we can-
We can always change it again, but I think we need to try it. Okay.
And you can wear sweatpants.
You're still filming.
Yeah.
Just make sure she films above, yeah.
Gym, tan and lingerie, right?
And only my good side.
That's why, that's why a lot of-
Few years back.
I did, I tried, I asked for a lot of, boards have privacy, and it, it looks better, too.
So I had another thing for the board.
All right.
Uh, can staff have December twenty-fourth off?
I was, I was gonna ask about that too, because we-
It's Monday, which is the day before Christmas.
Last year we voted-
Better, but I got told, I got it.
Last year we voted, I brought up to the day after Thanksgiving to have it off, and I think we should do the same for Christmas.
I agree.
All staff, correct?
Right, yeah.
I think, yeah, definitely.
I think so. You know, you need a motion for that.
Is it paid, is a paid day off or just the day off?
It's paid if the board gives thumbs up, if not, then, yeah.
Anybody can take a day off unpaid, but I think there'd be a paid day off.
So if we make a motion for all employees to have the day off, who are we gonna have to cover the PD? Be fair is fair?
PD does what the PD needs to do.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
PD takes care of themselves. Well, you know, they have to think about Christmas and Thanksgiving Day, they have to have coverage, so.
They get an extra day in their personnel hall.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to, um, approve giving the day before Thanksgiving off to all-
Christmas.
Day before Christmas.
Uh, Christmas.
Second amendment.
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other select board items? Any public comment? Yes, David?
Getting back to the lease thing.
Yep.
I understood what you were saying about our proposed warrant article, it's not valid because the legislative body cannot tell selectmen how to write a lease.
No.
No, no, no.
To manage the property. You want, you want us to read the RSA to you, David?
Well, I guess we should have a copy of it, so I'm-
I can give you my-
Forty-one colon eleven dash-
I can give them a copy.[1563.51]
41:11 dash, here's the RSA.
Okay, so what they see, what the historical society proposed warrant article invalid, what's invalid?
Do you want me to read it to you?
It's, it's like the town can, or can give the rights to another, what is it, governing body or something?
Public officers.
Public, yeah, but the-
So you can't lease it to the historical society?
Yes, no, that's not the issue, David.
Why don't we read it?
We can lease it to the historical society.
Yeah, go ahead and read it.
The issue is on the income that you get on our piece of property, we ask to be turned back into that property for repairs, rather than having you use it for your speakers and your railroad station and whatever else you're doing. That is the issue. You're a 501(c)(3). You're, you know, you can operate by, you can solicit funds, you can ask the town for funds, you can have fundraisers, but on our piece of property, we should not allow you to earn an income from that property and then spend it on your operations that have nothing to do with the town. And I think that's the one hangup we have. Is that right, Kathleen?
I agree with what you're saying. I'm going to go the legal route.
Okay.
The selectmen shall have authority to manage all real property owned by the town and to regulate its use unless such management and regulation is delegated to other public officers by the vote of the town or is governed by other statutes. And this is where it said, Conservation Commission, Heritage Commission, Parks and Rec, a town forest. This shall include the power to rent or lease such properties during periods not needed for public use, provided however that any rental or lease agreement, so here's the other hitch, for a period of more than one year shall not be valid unless ratified by the vote of the town. The legislative body, which is the voters, may vote to authorize the board of selectmen to rent or lease municipal property for a term up to five years without further vote or ratification of the town. Once adopted, this authority shall remain in effect until specifically rescinded by the legislative body at any duly-warned meeting, provided that the term of the lease entered prior to the decision shall remain in effect. So as this is written, every five years, it has to come back in front of the voters, the legislative body, to approve that a lease can, that selectmen can lease certain property. These do not turn over and go on and on and on. There is a five-year limit now, and this was updated in 2009.
And I don't think there's any desire on anybody's part to want to terminate leasing. I mean, it rightfully belongs under your oversight.
Right.
Because it is a historical building and, you know, having seen what's in it, there's a lot of amazing things in there and, you know, it properly should be leased to you.
But we have to follow statute.
Right.
It's our duty. So David, just type in RSA, let me read the number again to you. Oh, that's 91.
41:11 dash.
Thank you, Kathleen.
No, I didn't, I didn't do it with any pleasure, let me tell you.
Yeah.